For the rain, we're going to give you a special blessing. Thank you very much. And then, and then we'll ask you to leave, but you're the first one to complain about the rain. So I'm going to call this work session to order being three oh two P M. of the city council being Tuesday, September twelfth, twenty twenty-three. We are now in order. We're going to go move on to item two invocation will be given to us by council member Mata. Before I go on there, once of all, I want to be able to extend on the councils behalf, our condolences.
Thank you.
To the Rodriguez family, to Ramirez family, to the Mata family, everybody. Please accept our condolences on the tragic news of your nephew. Many of us here at the city attended. It was so heavily attended that we weren't able to. We want to give the family time to grieve and give your time, but please accept our condolences on behalf of the city, city staff and the city council.
Appreciate that. Thank you very much.
And Julia, go ahead and lead us in prayer.
Sure. Father God, we're coming for you this afternoon, Lord, and we just thank you, Lord, first of all, for the beautiful rain that we have received, Lord. But it's just so refreshing, Lord, to get this, this water that we so desperately needed, Lord Jesus. And Lord, we just ask the Lord, you would just take control over this meeting, Lord Jesus, and then you would just guide us. Give us the wisdom and the knowledge that we need to make decisions, Lord. It's going to be best for our city, Lord. We just pray that you would just bless us, Lord. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Think maybe seated, we're going to move on to item three. Real quick, everybody here is in the back. We're going to move on to item D, discuss the purchase of Tahoe for police department. Mr. Adams?
Mayor, council. Coming to you with proposal for purchase of fifteen police package Tahos. We have a local vendor in Midland, American Emergency Products, that has entered, sent us the proposal and can supply the vehicles. It will be under the tips pricing. The only issue is currently right now, we do not know from General Motors what the rebate will be.
I thought about delivery.
Don't know that one either.
Okay.
But right now, the biggest thing is a rebate amount. Previously, our Tahos were seventy-five thousand, and that was based on nine thousand, a little over nine thousand dollars in rebates. We do not know that, so they have, with all the price increases, it's eighty-one thousand, five hundred and nineteen dollars and fifty cents per unit. But that could end up being plus or minus ten percent, most likely on the plus side. And that comes with all fifteen of them, comes to one million, two hundred and twenty-two thousand, seven hundred and ninety-eight dollars and fifty cents.
Ms. Adams, this coming out of the twenty-two budget? Is it coming out of this budget, or is it for next?
It's for next year.
Next one. Okay.
Yes, and the replacement units, the units that are being replaced will be sold at auction.
Okay.
And then I'm also due to the issue that we've had with the fifteen that were previously purchased. They just now have gotten into the shop in Houston to be outfitted, so we have not even received those yet. So I'm working on, if I can get allotment for an additional fifteen, I would like to come back to council for an additional fifteen.
Okay. Counsel, any discussion questions?
Just a question. How, how often are these vehicles replaced? Is it so many years of service and then, or mileage, or?
Right now, they're on five-year replacement schedules.
A five-year replacement schedule?
That has delayed the replacement.
Okay.
The supply chain, and they're, right now, they're dropping like flies.
You mean you're having to have a lot of maintenance on them?
I'm having to have a ton of maintenance on them. I mean, we have a lot of cam issues with them.
Okay. Thank you.
It's not from anything, but just the use.
Yeah. Okay, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions?
When you sell the vehicles, how much you normally get in the past?
It all varies. I mean, some of them we get fifteen hundred for, some of them we've got, you know, as much as eighty-five hundred. But those are few and far between.
I know the sheriff's department needs them. Any other questions? All right. Thank you, sir. We're going to move on to item two, I'm sorry, item three, four. Discuss amending the Odessa City Coach after two animal control. Cedric?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
We're coming here today to talk to you about separating Odessa Animal Services from Odessa Police Department. It's been a part of Odessa Police Department forever, and we need to move in a different direction. It's nothing, anybody's done wrong. It's not one, this is bad or anything. It's, we need to grow. We need to expand. We need to do more, especially with the new facility that we have. We need to look at new options, new things we could possibly do for the community. And so at this point, the first thing we have to do is change the city ordinances. Because the city ordinances places the chief of police as the number one person. So what we have to do is change our ordinances. While we did that, the Animal Advisory Committee and myself took a look at all the ordinances. Why just look at one thing when we haven't had it changed, I think, since two thousand seventeen? So it was time to move forward and see what we need to do for the future. So the ordinances that you'll have are for everything. It's not just the separation.
So this, so the, the board went through all of these?
Yes, they did.
And will establish and find apparent phenilia. So we're still not, still no chickens, right?
We're still no chickens.
I know, would the separation help in hiring animal control officers? Would, would the, I guess, would the requirements be, wouldn't that be so strict?
It's not the police department's fault that that's happened. They have different guidelines that they have to go by. They have to treat all their employees the same. So as a citizen, has to be looked at the same as a police officer. That was just the guidelines that they have to go by. And we have loosened up our restrictions a little bit, because like a clerk, why do we look at a clerk the same as I do a police officer? So the chief has allowed those, you know, limitations to be regarded. But right now, the biggest problem with hiring is two factors, pay and euthanasia. Unfortunately, that's a part of our job that we just all have to, we have to look at and do. We have a huge amount of illnesses out in the community, and we have to address that. So those are two big issues, but the pay is huge.
Okay. So a couple of things that, looking on the ordinance that I wanted to talk about, private animal sale.
About what?
Private animal sale?
Okay.
Is this a change from the old? Are we, are we changing that, or is that, this is basically what we're seeing here in front of us, the standard?
Well, there's, there's some standard stuff. It's always been public sale. You have to have an itinerant vendor permit. But it's never just really been super enforced, because you'll see people out on the Walmart parking lots and stuff like that. And we stop them, tell them they can't do it. They should receive a citation for not having a permit to sell. We've taken one step further, because we're following other communities across the state. You have breeders permits, sellers permits, itinerant vendor permits. So those are the things that we're looking at. We're wanting to expand even more.
Okay. Do, do we want to be able to expand just a little bit why we're doing that? Because people, I, I get that question, you know, because a lot of people didn't know that that couldn't happen.
Right.
So every time that someone's stopped from being able to sell, you know, like he used to hate puppies for sale, or whatever it is, or giving them away, and then they, we happen to see them and stop them, they just moved to another location. But I get every occasion to say, hey, didn't know that. Well, near that, I got educated on that. But why we, why, what's the need?
There's no control over the population, overpopulation. I mean, you have people out here that are just collecting animals and breeding and selling, just selling, selling, selling. You're, they're not vaccinating for rabies. They're not vaccinating for distemper parvo. They're not microchipping. There's no accountability for the seller to the buyer. So when you want to buy an animal, it should be from a reputable breeder. And they, it should come with all your, all the vaccination records and everything that you should have. But people are just selling on the streets. They're selling in the parking lots. You have people coming in from Dallas, bringing animals in over here, and they're winding up being sick. They've got distemper, they've got parvo, and now we've got it in the community even more. And it's not, it's, it's happening everywhere. It's not just Odessa. It's happening in Midland. It's happening in Monahans Crane, everywhere.
They're having a rabies situation in El Paso.
I've heard we've had one case in Monahans, and Odessa Midland has not had a case of rabies, and I believe, don't quote me, but I believe it's about thirty years. And we're coming close, and it's because people are not being responsible pet owners. You've got to have that vaccination. You've got to have it. And the distemper and parvo, I can't tell you how much we see in a day. And we test these animals that come to the shelter, because so far, we have not had a outbreak in our shelter since April of twenty-one. And that's because we test at the door. And if they're ill, I'm sorry, we euthanize. We cannot afford to fix it, because it's anywhere from five hundred to twenty-five hundred dollars to try and fix a parvo or distemper animal. It's expensive. So we, and then, you know, well, are you going to foster them out to the community? I'm going to put it out in the community, an exposed animal. So I have to look at the safety of the community versus an animal.
Well, the overall protection is your responsibility.
Yes.
About the wellness and health of the pet population, that it doesn't pollinate over into the human population.
Yes.
And what we're seeing, and I was reading up, it was getting in El Paso, it could have services. And basically, there was a third party coming into the animal shelter, and they wind up not doing the euthanization. They completely stopped. It created a huge overflow of our population and roaming packs throughout the community that they're not trying to get in control associated with the borders situation. Now, the only option is population control euthanization at a mass amount.
Yes.
It's becoming a huge problem.
Well, and that's one thing, I'm trying to follow the, and I'm not trying, I am following the American Veterinary Association Guidelines on Shelter Medicine, the December two thousand twenty-two edition, and they stress, don't overpopulate your, your, overcapacity. Because all that does is turn around and breed more. And so when, when what happens is you get a sick animal in there, if you don't isolate, if you don't contain it, if you let it in there, then instead of euthanizing one, I may wind up euthanizing one hundred and thirty to save the shelter. And then I've got to sanitize, close the shelter, and that just overpopulates more out in the community. So it's, it's a nasty circle that we, that we run around, and we've got to try and do something to stop it.
Kelly, is everything running here in the fee schedule? This is all going to be updated, or is this updated?
Yes, it's going to be updated.
Okay. So what we're seeing right here is what we currently have?
No, what's in this one right now is what we want.
Okay.
And we haven't gone up, what, ten dollars on adoption fees and like that? But where we are looking at is like your boarding fees. We don't board. We're not a boarding facility. But our old schedule was five dollars a day. Well, we would have people say, come reclaim your animal. Well, I'm on vacation for two weeks. You need to keep it. What do we do with it? You know, what do I do with it? So instead of charging them five dollars a day, now it's forty-five dollars a day. And it can become the property of the city of Odessa after ten days. So we have to look at ways to offset that.
Okay. Never thought about that.
Oh, yeah, we get that all the time, all the time.
Wow. Okay, so these are, this will be current. So we'll be seeing this in a couple of weeks?
Yes. All of these ordinances, you'll see, there's two other big ordinances that we put in that's never been there before. One is mandatory microchipping. We are requesting that every citizen in the city of Odessa that has an animal come by and buy a microchip, an implant. The reason being, if he accidentally gets out, we, the animal control officer finds it, scans it, we can return it to him. It, within that same day, they don't have to come to the shelter. So it's a plus for the owner, and it's a plus for us. We get more return to owner in the field than we do from the shelter.
Yeah. No, I agree with that. You know, and, and I've asked you this question. What are we experiencing here? Because every day, you know, my son lost their, their dog. And, you know, he, he regretted not chipping the dog.
Right.
And so it was a four-generation breeding. And so, but since then, I've been paying a lot of attention to the social media. How many animals people are losing on a daily basis? It's incredible, and I get one, there's something going on that we're not seeing.
Well, I can only give you an example. We'll take a sampling. One of the animal control officers, I'll tell him, do a four-block radius, count stray animals, count, what do you see? One count was thirty-two. In one block, they counted fifty-one yesterday. People do not realize how bad this is in our community. And it's not the animal control officer's fault. It's not the shelter's fault. It's the community. They're the ones that has to stop the breeding, which brings us to that new ordinance where we're requesting mandatory spay neuter within the city limits.
And when, so how, how, how's that going to work? I mean, do, so are we giving the community a time period to come in then?
We can. I mean, you have to be wise about it. You have to be wise about it. That, that's why we need to move forward, because with the, with the veterinarian, we would love to hire full-time. We could offer low-cost spay neuter clinic.
Where are we at on that process?
Oh, it's, it's hard to get one. We do currently have two vets that come in twice a week. I, I'm trying to pull them in a third day, and if we can, then I want to open that up to that low-cost spay neuter. And if we can't a third day, then I'm going to try and flip one day over to low cost.
Counsel, we're just wondering, we got any contraction on the?
Not that I've heard.
Okay.
Yeah, it's.
Even, even with the combination, combination of dollars, it's still?
Yeah, it doesn't matter. It, it, that is one field that is suffering badly across the nation. I mean, I'm on a veterinarian website, and I can't tell you how many I see. The two veterinarians that we do use, they have been coming to Odessa and servicing them for eleven years. And it would be wonderful if we could get them on a little better contract, you know, to keep them here.
Maybe we need to look at that. We don't do, have any traction on the latter.
Exactly. And they love the new facility and the stuff that we have in it.
Impressive.
Yeah.
Really enjoyed it. Counsel, do you have any questions on what we're seeing here before us?
I have just that clarification, just for the audience, for animal services, you're talking shelter and the animal control just as well.
Yes.
It's all, it's all in one. I apologize for that. It's my pet.
Well, at least.
That wasn't mine.
I still have, I haven't lost.
The second question on that was, we haven't.
Turn it off.
Landon?
Okay.
The second question was.
That one works.
I think it would be interesting, because I have, as far as moving.
Have the mic be sure.
Yes.
Chief Burkey's in the back room, and I have spoken to him about it. It may be interesting that everyone is aware that he is in favor of this.
He's smiling at me. He's going, yes, go, go.
My hearing hasn't come back yet. Woo. My goodness. Can you repeat that whole thing again?
Thomas. I think we got it.
Yeah.
Yes, the chief is in favor of the split. He's very happy for us. PD needs to move on and, and, and protect the city. And let us do what we know. We know the animals. We know what to do with the animals. Let them deal with everything.
That's great. Counsel, we have any other discussion on this item?
No.
All right. Kelly, anything else on this?
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you. We're going to move on to item five, discuss renew the software maintenance between the city of Odessa and Tyler Technologies for the Tyler Munus Enterprise. Mr. Flores?
Mayor, council. So we want to renew the ERP system. We're asking just for five months, because what we're trying to do is get all our major software to come on January. We're trying to kind of streamline the process, so we know what our bill bills are, and we can kind of get a control of our budget by knowing our big expenses right after January, and then after that, we're kind of just going to control the smaller stuff. So the price is going to be a hundred and eight thousand, five hundred and ninety-three and ninety-four cents. It's going to come out of this year's budget, out of the software maintenance.
Okay. Okay. Counsel, any questions on that?
You say one eighteen, you're on a way?
Oh, one eighteen. It's a hundred and eighteen thousand, five hundred and ninety-three and ninety-four cents.
Mr. Flores, I do want to say, I did get a report that we've, that IT department is doing a timely response to request. And things are getting fixed, done. I really appreciate what we're hearing from all the department heads. You know, really getting on it. And one of the things, you know, everybody deals with IT at work, and it looks like you come and ask for a repair for one thing, then ten or twenty other things get there. That's not happening in this case. I'm trying to right there. That is a miracle in itself, so. Thank you very much for how you're handling the situation. Counsel, any questions and comments? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We're going to move on to, I got, item six, discuss reallocation of ten thousand, three hundred and seventy-eight. And.
Two oh nine.
Two oh nine, Community Development Blockchain, the San Doma. Is that ten million? Is that ten million?
No.
Okay. That's kind of, I said, wait a minute, how are you three digits?
I would love to have ten million dollars to spend.
My mom started working, saying, hey, we got some projects.
If you have some laying around, I'll be happy to take care of it for you.
And we weren't even getting that in the high deck of the HUD.
Good afternoon, mayor and council.
Bless you.
Bless you.
As you probably remember, the last time I was before you, we had discussed about the problem we're having with vacant lots around town. About the weeds. And I looked at that and went back. Back in the, like, around the two thousands,
we had a program where we had hired a contractor that went around and mowed vacant lots. And we paid the contractor, and we went on, we didn't burden the street department during that time. When the ordinance changed back in, it was in twenty nineteen, where we started charging people to, to mow their lots when they got the notices, and then we started charging them for that service. It went through the, the street department. So the street department put together the bill after they mowed the lots and would send them out. If they didn't pay, then they would, the city would put a lien against the property. In order to kind of alleviate the burden on the street department for doing that, I think if we could hire a contractor again, like we used to, and mow those vacant lots, I've got some extras, twenty nineteen C W G funds that I'm asking for you to consider reallocating to, reallocating it to a vacant lot mowing program where we can hire a contractor to take care of these lots. These lots wouldn't, it says to be in violation, but they wouldn't necessarily have to be in violation. If they were vacant, and, you know, he had the time, he could just go mow them. And we could, you know, address some of those lots that are not in violation, but still look bad, like the ones on Grand View. Those look terrible.
So how, how would they be identified by the officers?
Yes, they will be identified. We've got, we, the street department has a vacant lot mowing map of all the vacant lots in town, and we have a copy of that. We can take that and look at the, the map and go check those lots and, and just go mow them.
Would we do just public lots at the city or?
We can do public lots. We can do drill sites if they're wide open. We don't need a warrant to go on those. So if they're wide open and they're not secured, we can just take, they can take the tractor and go in and just mow them.
Okay.
Yeah. But I, you know, the program is outlined, is with your agenda item, explaining kind of how we would look at that. I, I think it would be a good use of some of our, of our funds that we're not spending right now. And it would be under a public service activity, so this would keep us right below that fifteen percent public service cap that we have. So it, it would be up to you guys to be able to, you know, whether you want to go forward with that. But I feel like this would be a good way to address some of the code issues we're having.
Okay. Counsel, any questions on this?
On the, on the one eighteen, in one way, how long would that last? And the other part of the question is, what do you think an annual expense would come to in that?
We don't have a bid from a contractor yet. We haven't put the RFP together. I'm sure, I think typically, the street department is charging about five to six hundred, I think, on mowing a, a lot. So I'm thinking that's probably what, we would probably be somewhere in that general cost.
Do we need an RFP for ten thousand?
No, I don't think so. Do you?
You're under fifty thousand.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, I, I, I don't know. I have to look at HUD, because they have some different requirements. I think HUD, we're okay too.
Yeah.
But.
I think from the past, we just might do, I think there was, have the list of where it was available. I mean, it's been a while, but.
Yeah, right.
Okay.
But we're asking for approval just to develop this program and, and get out there and start mowing some of those lots.
Counsel, any discussion? Any doubts on that, Rita?
I, I got the next one too.
Oh, you got one more. Item seven, discuss request of Meals on Wheels for extension time of expanded care funds. Go ahead.
Yes, Meals on Wheels has requested an extension to extend the balance of their cares funds. They have approximately fifty-seven thousand dollars sitting there that they would like to extend their contract for, just to be able to pay for meals. This will probably last him about, I'm going to guess, about ten months or less.
Counsel, any discussion on this? Okay, okay, I'm going to, I'm going to read a little bit on here. No discussion? Okay, Rita, so we'll go ahead and move this on to the couple of weeks, put it on the, can send it, gentle?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We're going to move on to item five, discuss a five-year contract with Easy Rider. Mr. Jones?
Mayor, I have, gracious. Mayor, I have, I'd rather talk like this, Doug Probotz here. And basically, this is just a five-year contract that we do, Odessa, Midland, every five years. And of course, this is our Easy Rider. And Doug here, he could tell you a little bit more about it, what all he does and everything.
Right. This is our contract, provide this management services to the city to run the public transit agency. And it's a very simple thing that the cities came up with a few years back. To, to kind of give some liability protection to the cities, they contract out the bus service, and they hire a contractor between the two cities. That way neither city's burdened with running the system. And this is just our renewal. It's not a big increase. It's, it's minimal from the current year, and it increments up a little bit every, every year, about four, four point three percent, I think, something like that, so. It also, in this contract, is the liability insurance for the buses. So if you look at the dollar amount, you think, oh, Doug's making a lot of money. Doug's not making a lot of money. It's mostly through the insurance purpose. They pay me a little bit, but, and, and this contract's not paid by the city. The city has to approve it. But the district pays the contract with, of course, some city money, but mostly federal and state money. So it's not a burden on the city, so, so to speak. I mean, the city does pay a, a.
Six, sixty?
Six hundred and eighty thousand this next year.
We just went up, we went up on that.
Yep. And, but that's, that's the local match portion of the funding, which is required to get the federal funds, so. Any, any questions?
Counsel, any questions?
Is that six eighty over a five-year period?
No, the six eighty is a separate number. There, I know it's kind of confusing, but the, the city's paid six eighty to the district for a local match, so we can draw federal funds. And then the district pays this contract, which is five hundred and, so, twenty-five and six hundred, I don't think it ever gets much over six hundred thousand this five-year contract, but it's a separate number that's paid through the district.
So annually, we, when they go through, but our budgets all kind of coincide. And so there was to ask, the board, you know, since we serve on the board, both me and Mark are on there. So there was an ask, and both Midland and Odessa did eighty thousand each. So we went up eighty thousand from six hundred. We haven't been six hundred for a little while.
Yeah.
We went up, we went up to eighty thousand with a match from Midland. The request was a little bit more, but I had asked the Easy Rider, you know, and, and the board to do the eighty, so we could take a hard view, because we're going to zero budget, you know, wanting to see where we're at. And then, so we. And then, uh, so we, we always need to, we always can come back. But we needed to have a real good picture as far as what we were seeing in the, in the, in the city budget. And so uh, I think both cities uh, agreed and we wound up doing the uh, eighty each, and which gives them additional one-sixth, but you know, the thing is, is that, once we start getting a good handle where we're at with our budget, can always, I would, you know, tell Doug and say, what they're doing is they're very uh, hands-on with the budget, they can account for every penny where it's going, where they're seeing peaks and valleys, where they need to adjust, uh, from routes to fuel consumption. They're, they're making huge adjustments going to a smaller bus. And so let me tell you, it, it, it's a very, very uh, uh, very conservative budget, how they're operating it. And uh, and so it's very thorough and, you know, we go through it every month. And I think everybody there on the board, it really has a good handle. Staff really does a good job of explaining what's going on in both communities.
And so Be very transparent, very above board, I don't want any, anyone ever thinking that the money's being spent away, it wasn't authorized.
Yeah, you know, and one of the things that Doug does when he pitches in, and we said if he wants more money, he's got to go into CDLs, he can pitch in in the gaps.
Right, right, and no, they don't let me drive the buses, they've seen me drive out of my own cars, and they're not smart enough to go, no, you, you don't drive the city bus.
Now, the one thing if we can, the only thing is, is that we get a lot of drivers that like to clear bumper cars out in the community. That's, that's why the insurance keeps going up.
Uh, that's true, that's true.
Counsel, we have any other questions?
I've got one question, your CDL, the CDL drivers, correct?
Yes, about half.
Half?
Uh, the larger buses require a CDL driver, that's the, Mayor Hardwood mentioned the smaller buses, that's so we can pay a little less. Uh, and, and about half our routes don't require a CDL bus, don't need one that big, so.
I, I just wondered, because I know a lot of the, a lot of the oilfield service companies are getting an influx of immigrants in with Florida CDL licenses. And that test over there in Florida is a joke evidently.
Well.
These guys can't, so I just, I wonder if you'd see any of that.
No, none, uh, we, we do our own CDL training, uh, we have a, a certified trainer on site. We're going through the process right now of getting on testing, so we, we can do the whole thing, uh, train and test, and then they just go to the DMV to get their license.
One of the things, the reason why they're asking for the adjustment, so we can go up on some of those satiries. And uh, so, you know, this is gonna, this is gonna help, but, you know, that, we can't stop here. And once we wind up getting a good control on our budget, we really need to look at what else we can do. Because the thing is, if we're able to get to a higher workforce, we'll be able to provide more coverage, more routes, things of that nature, so.
And that's a big part of it, we would like to, the city's expanded uh, quite a bit since our routes were set, we'd like to cover the the bigger parts of the city, um, to the north and to the east that are, are not covered by at this time, so, but to do that, you need more drivers.
Yep.
You, you said
You said you provide the uh, CDL training. Once they get that CDL license, do you bind those drivers to stay with us for, I mean, for, with the uh, transit program for X number of years?
Unfortunately, you can't do that. Uh, but the CDL license we do uh, train and test for is a CDL B, uh, which is a, a, a different license than what most oilfield companies need, which is a CDL A.
That's where I was going with it, I thought we might be losing them for better pay somewhere else, yeah.
Well, we do some, but mostly to solid waste haulers.
Okay, thank you.
They use the same type license, and we'll lose them to the school district occasionally.
Yeah, yeah, Midland, Midland's been very competitive.
The, the, the funds that the city provided this, this year puts us right in between, our pay right in between Ector County Independent School District and M I S D, so we feel we're in a good spot.
Okay.
We're in there in the mix. Uh, Doug, is, is the next item yours also? I don't know.
Mayor, that's a, just a ninety, ninety-day extension, I don't think we're gonna need it, but in the past, I think we've had an issue where the contract fell off and then it didn't get done for a couple of months, and I just want to make sure that we had no interruptions.
Okay.
That's all I wanted.
Okay, so we have the same contract?
Same, same thing.
Okay.
Right, and the trick with the contract, it has to go from Odessa
To Midland.
To Midland, they have to, yeah, they all are the host, and then they have, their legal team has to have a look at it, and then it comes back with their changes and
Got to love the bureaucracy.
It kind of shuffles a little bit, or it did last time.
Yeah, yeah, so we just want to make sure we work out just a no interruption service.
Sounds good, I appreciate it, Doug, thank you. We're gonna go to item ten, discuss the Ector County Utility District E-Cut wholesale water rate for uh, twenty twenty-three, twenty-four on a month-to-month basis until further notice. Mr. Niles?
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council. On November tenth, twenty twenty, the City Council approved a new wholesale water supply contract with Ector County Utility District, also known as E-Cut, for the city of Odessa to supply water to E-Cut for the purpose of resale to their customers. Each year, the city uses a rate model, which both the city and E-Cut agreed to use to calculate the wholesale water rate to E-Cut. Each year, City Council must approve the new calculated rate. During this year's rate study and review from the contract between the city of E-Cut and the city attorney's office, they determined that the twenty twenty contract is not valid and should not be enforced. Based off this information, the staff uh, um, current recommendation is to renew with E-Cut on a month-to-month basis at the current twenty twenty-three rate of three dollars and eighty-three cents per thousand gallons until further notice.
Counsel, any uh, discussion? Comments? Somebody uh, read the uh, the contract? Discussion on the, the determination of the contract not being valid? What action are we looking to do on here?
Well, for the time being, we're gonna do month-to-month, uh, because I think that is the right thing to do. We do have folks in West Odessa that we depend on our water. And so we are gonna do it month-to-month for the time being, and we will see what happens in the next couple of months.
For our audience, can we tell why the twenty twenty contract is not valid?
Uh, we have, we have, I, I would, I would prefer we not go there right now.
Okay.
Because I mean, we, that'll all probably play out at the right time.
I, I will say that the thing is, is that there was a discussion, um, prior to this, last year, or earlier this year, I was contacted by uh, two board members of E-Cut, one is a former. Where they were disputing the uh, the rates, saying that they were overcharged. Uh, I had since then, been keeping a close eye, I've asked the staff and several times I asked about, that these rates are the ones that were discussed, and E-Cut took an active part in this formula, they agreed to the formula, and they agreed to the price.
That's correct.
And then they came back and said that we were overcharging them.
And, and Mayor, you may want to get Mr. Niles and take about third, independent third party that does the rates, correct?
Right.
Can you explain that?
We have an, an independent uh, party, uh, Next Gen, who does the rate study for us.
And, and, and they're the ones that were
Correct.
Yeah.
And they stand by the rates that they have set.
One of the points of contention that was also discussed is the, the, the debt that was issued for the uh, retrofit of our water treatment plant. And felt that that was a part of the water system. Though not only is it a part of the water system, it's also part of the delivery of the water system. Not only for the citizens of the city of Odessa and Ector County, but also E-Cut customers in Ector County, outside of the city of Odessa. And so I asked for a discussion, give me points of how, why, and how it should not be part of the formula. And nothing was ever given, other than just an opinion that was disagreed, until there's nothing for us to be able to review is gonna be part of the delivery system. You know, you, that's where the source of the water comes in, this is where it's treated, and then it's distributed. I said, you know, explain to me how that is a part, the upgrade system, he goes, should be just put on the citizens of Odessa. I said, citizens of Odessa is paying for the whole system. And once I had, once again, I paid, you know, reiterated this to E-Cut. He uh, was, was this, is that the city of Odessa resides within Ector County, not the other way around. And so the thing is, is that, we have a contract to deliver that water, and, and, and the upgrades of the, of the, of the plant are necessary to be able to continue that delivery. And so that was a point of contention that started last year, that flowed through uh, through these discussions. And so I think those are points that definitely made, and I think that we need to stick by, because, you know, they said, look, you know, this thing, what, we discussed it fifty-nine, sixty when they were built? And so the upgrade, the upgrades are necessary, so be able to continue the quality of service. So with that, counsel, do you have any other discussion, any items? All right, so we'll go ahead and just move forward with this, put it on the agenda for a couple of weeks. Mr. Niles, appreciate it, thank you. We're gonna move on to um, item eleven. Discuss the personnel policies and manual update, Mr. Hurst?
See if I can do this without blowing everybody out. Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. I'll move over here a little bit. Uh, was asked to come in and discuss the personnel policy manual update that we initiated several months ago. Uh, just give everyone a brief update on that. As you recall, we contracted with Marachi Management Group, a firm out of Dallas, that's a sole proprietorship. Uh, he has worked through the admin procedures and pulled out the personnel portions of that. As you recall, we had a number of items in the administrative procedures that were buried that should have been in the personnel manual and vice versa. Uh, we've worked through the existing documents to do language updates, remove some of the non-applicable items. Um, some examples of that would be um, one that we actually had someone try to enroll in the other day, which was the savings bond enrollment through payroll.
Explain that, I'm, I'm not following you on that one.
Uh, that was something that was done ten, fifteen, twenty years ago, where payroll departments would let people do payroll deductions, and you could purchase a Series E or a Series I bond. We still have a policy in there that our personnel depart, or payroll department will perform those. Treasury discontinued that process probably ten years ago. Uh, we have a couple of other policies in there that are not applicable, of long-term disability policy that's called for in the personnel manual. Those things have been dropped from the benefits program many years ago, but never made it out of the personnel manual. Uh, from there, the next stage was to develop an employee handbook, which the difference between the policy manual and the handbook is that handbook is just that, it's something to be delivered to the employees at hire. Uh, something that employees can use as a reference. It's a plain language document, so it doesn't get into the legalese portions. Um, it also doesn't contain the mechanical aspects of personnel administration. So as someone promotes, an employee really doesn't need to know how that process goes through the computer system. So getting that employee handbook together is something that I think will be very beneficial to the group, uh, to the employees. Uh, we have that. We have the first draft of it anyway, a solid draft of that, that is under review right now by the city manager. After that review's completed, then the plan from the contractor is to go in and finish reverse engineering the policy manual to determine what points we need to get some additional direction on. Uh, there are a few policies that we still may want to look at, may want to revise, uh, some of the issues with those. Uh, beyond that, uh, we've made no payments to the vendor yet, uh, as we have had no delivery of items, so. Once we get the handbook delivered, then we'll probably be coming back and requesting a partial payment for that.
Okay, Mr. Hurst, let me, I'm the one who requested for this item to be out here and given the presentation.
Yes, sir.
For the reason is, is for a couple of reasons. So when we wind up doing a survey for the, for the employees, one of the things is, is the policy and procedures came up, you know, through the employees, through the survey, well, that was uh, the first mention. It was then we realized that the policy and procedures hadn't been updated in the city of Odessa, and I may be wrong, but it was what, nineteen eighty-nine or nineteen ninety-eight?
Two thousand eight.
Two thou, the two thousand eight?
There are some that are ninety-eight, uh, the biggest revision was in two thousand two. Uh, and there were some, one or two that were revised in two thousand eight.
Okay.
Yes, very old.
So it, it came to realize that we have things that uh, no longer were applicable. One was basically buying the E-E series and things of that nature, and other things that have come to, to the state and federal level that needed to be included.
Yes, sir.
We had a timeline of August. And if I recall, we, you know, and then it wasn't a hard date, but nonetheless, we're looking at implementation of August, we're in September, and we're barely now getting the first draft. Can you explain to me what has happened from the, we initiated this council, initiated that, to the point where we're at and why the delays are happening? Because we're continuing to bring in more employees. So my understanding, we run into city managers, so my, 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 my thought process is it, what is the orientation? What are we putting in their hands right now, if anything? Are we still putting in their hands the revision of the policy and procedures from two thousand and two? Uh, and so I understand we haven't made a payment, but what's the work that's been going on to this point? That we were not able to make, not uh, the August deadline, and we are here in September. Can you walk us through real quickly what, what has happened?
Yes, sir, we have multiple issues.
Okay.
Um, one of being that the vendor is not able to work on the project exclusively. He's also a public speaker, um, has done a number of speaking engagements. He also had some health issues this summer.
Okay.
Uh, we, when his availability has happened, we've also had some staffing challenges within the human resource department. So I haven't had the ability to work on it to the degree I would like.
Okay, so how do we fix those two, two problems?
Uh, we hire people and put me on it more.
Okay, we're, 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 we're ready to go.
And we have people
So the thing is, is that, you know, I'm hearing it up across the line, that we wind up getting new people and not getting processed, I know we're in the budget, at the end of the budget.
Yes.
But
Which has been another issue.
Okay.
I work on that as well.
Uh huh.
So, there are a number of other priorities that have been unfortunately more time pressing. This one is urgent, but it doesn't have a hard deadline on it. Uh, whereas some of the other projects do, and unfortunately, some of the transactional things that I get involved in.
If the council were to discuss a hard line, would it help the process, I mean, or, but, I mean, how, the thing is, is that we're, we're in September.
Yes, sir.
October one's gonna come on, come across, we're gonna go into twenty, you know, we're starting our new budget. We still don't have a policy and procedures. We still, you know, we're very specific in the criticals, uh, outside uh, agencies are talking about, one, having the outdated policy and procedures, one, we didn't have a social, social policy in place, I mean, the, the, there's a litany of list of things that needed to address. And the thing is, is that uh, they're still ongoing. And, I mean, there's no violations in it, but the thing is, is that we need a rulebook for these employees.
Yes, sir.
You know, for, for the entire organization, you know, and is there a way we can sit down and work through this, we can get this ball rolling and get it done, because we need to get to the end, to, to, to the finish line.
And from T two, we had a hot button on uh, sexual harassment, sexual harassment, that was not there. Uh, that's a concern.
Forgot about that.
We did complete our training on that.
Okay.
I believe we are at ninety-nine point nine percent complete with regard to the training. So, that process, we, at that time, we were also identifying a training platform. We identified it, put it in place, made the modifications we needed to to the course, deployed that. Again, it was a big project.
We also have a, you also said something about we have the administration policy, and then we have the personnel policies.
Yes, sir.
What, what are the difference between the two?
The administrative procedures are the things that don't apply to personnel. So that's gonna be something that's driven by the legal department, uh, that are there. The issues for the city manager to use in order to perform city administrative functions. We have, through past actions, there has been some bleed of personnel issues into the administrative procedures as well.
Okay.
So pulling those back out, getting them in the personnel manual where this body can look at them as a whole.
How much of this can we accomplish? How much of this can we accomplish internally through the, through the, through your department? Is it a possibility?
Quite a bit of it.
What's, what's, what's holding us back from doing that?
A number of hours in the day, sir.
Okay. So what, you just don't have the people? I mean.
We are currently operating with one generalist out of three.
Okay. Any other?
Well, it sounds like you maybe hired the wrong person. Were they giving a deadline?
He has worked and met our deadlines and been able to return product to us.
But he hadn't met, but the September deadline, I mean, August deadline did not get met. Is this a, is this a one-man show? Does he have a staff?
No, he, it's a one-man show, so.
Yeah, therein lies your problem. You need to have, you need to have an expert do these things, cause I doubt that your staff or anybody in the city has got the expertise to deal with these policies and procedures.
There are some challenging aspects to it.
It's a complicated field.
Uh, when we get ready to go to the final product, uh, there is a legal firm that specializes in employee handbook, uh, employee manuals that we would like to engage.
Why haven't we?
Why, yeah, why, why you do that?
What are we waiting on?
We don't have the input for them yet. I don't wanna waste those dollars. Uh, they're, I would imagine fairly pricey.
You know, you'd almost be better off right now starting all over again and give us the deadlines. Because this, you, I don't know how this person was selected, but obviously, one-man show can't get there.
The thing is, is that you yourself said that this man doesn't have the expertise. So does he have the, do you have the expertise or do you not have the expertise according to what the statement you just made?
I asked the staff to hear the staff, yeah.
Is he not staff? Isn't it the whole staff? That's the man in charge. My, my point is this, you know, the thing is, is that what are, I'm trying to get to the point where what do we need to do going forward to get this thing to the finish line, get it done? That, that's all I'm asking, you know? Whether we wanna point fingers or not, nonetheless, we still have policy, policy procedures and administration policy procedures. We gotta get to the finish line. So we're laying out all the things that we're coming up short, fine. Okay. One, what, how do we resolve, what, what, what's the answer? How do we get?
More hands, sir.
Okay, more hands, all right? Have you put out those jobs? Are you actively looking for those people to, to, to fill out? Okay, so you already got the RFP, you already got the, uh, the personnel, you're already searching.
We are.
Okay. Second, how much is it gonna cost? You know, we need to, we need to hear that. And then two, you know, how, what, how fast can we get it in? Just three simple questions.
The how fast? I don't know.
Okay. So.
Uh, we will get you the best product we can as fast as we can.
So how many people are we looking that you need to put on?
I need two more. I've got one hired.
And, and you want, you put that in the, in upcoming budget, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And so that's part of the, the, the presentation that we did during the budget of how we wind up retooling that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we got that going?
Yes, sir.
All right. Then we got the cost there.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Then, so then, once we get that accomplished, uh, October one, can we wind up getting a report where we're at? And, uh, keep us, just keep the council updated through emails and just let us know, hey, this is where we're at. We got the people in place. We're moving along, just give us some updates of where we're at, because also we need to engage a, uh, legal firm to be able to review this. Let's, let's hear about that.
Okay.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Any, council, any other questions on this?
Mr. Hurst, uh, when the handbook is eventually completed and ready to be given to the new employees as they come in, will this be, uh, uh, an actual physical hand book or will it also be online?
No, it'll be a hand-delivered.
Okay, good. Counsel, any other questions? Mr. Hurst, thank you very much. So we're gonna move on to item twelve, discuss the ARPA funds and the use for allocations. Mr. Bowles? How's your boys do on Saturday?
So far, so good. Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I was gonna ask the council, do y'all still have the paper I gave out at the last work session with you guys right now?
No.
That's an easy answer. I can fix that. I just need to put it up on the screen for you guys.
We have it, just not with us.
It'd be a lot easier.
And I apologize, we'll get this up real quick.
We're good. It's not on.
I was a good student, Mr. Bowles.
Yeah. Look at this.
Read since, since the budget, huh?
Yep.
I was gonna ask the wrong question. I wouldn't think they would. It's really late from where we're sitting.
It's been a while to get it back to you.
And he's been sick and he's been traveling.
He just said we hadn't paid him because he hadn't got, he hadn't got the final product. He just said he met the deadlines.
This is gonna get really into bedroom dog.
I promise this one won't be as long as the first time I did it either, so. I just do have a brief update for some new rulings that came out and then we can talk about the projects and the funds and where they're at after that.
New rules this year?
They, they did change a little bit. It just kind of opened some things there up for us for more, uh, development and things like that. Yep, are y'all ready? Y'all good to go? Okay.
Waiting on you, brother.
All right, I apologize. Um, in August twenty twenty-three, the Treasury Department released the twenty twenty-three interim final rule that implements new uses authorized from the Consolidated Appropriations Act of twenty twenty-three. These new eligible uses allow recipients to use program funds for the following three uses. Emergency relief from natural disasters, community development, and surface transportation projects. Sounds like roads to me. They, they just can't say roads, but surface transportation projects. Existing eligible uses are generally unchanged, so everything that we've discussed prior, they, they haven't changed anything, just some minutia rules and legalese and along those lines, and recipients could continue to use the S L, S L F R F funds in accordance with the twenty twenty-two final rule. Well, I've got this old, older presentation up. I'll just wanna kinda reiterate what recipients may not use these funds for. These include no offsets of a reduction in net tax revenue resulting from a change in state or territory law, no extraordinary contributions to a pension fund for the purpose of reducing an accrued unfunded liability, no payments for debt service and replenishments of rainy day funds, no satisfaction of settlements and judgments, and no uses that contravene or violate the American Rescue Plan Act, uniform guidance conflicts of interest requirements or any other federal, state, or local requirements. So the, the page in front of you guys and on top of, on the, on the screen up here, this is where our funds are currently setting as of today. Shows what we have obligated for the city's pandemic response, the payroll reimbursement costs, our lost revenue allocation, and then our, of course, our allocations to our three sub recipients that as of right now, with everything the way it is, what, uh, council has allocated those funds that need to be reallocated and is why this discussion's taking place.
What's the, uh, remind WTFB allocation?
That is the West Texas Food Bank allocation. That has already been paid out, so those funds have already been removed from the total allocation of the funds that we have received.
Okay.
As you can see up at the top, we received the, the city received its funds in two tranches of ten million, one hundred and sixty-one thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars apiece. One in early twenty-two and the rest later, the following six months later. And where we're sitting at there, we have had the allocation for MCH. That was paid to them and then paid back to us, so those funds can be reallocated now. The allocation that's currently set up for O R M C has never been finalized, so we need to determine where that one million dollars, that can go back into the alloc- reallocation as well.
I wind up talking to R M C, Stacy Brown, and, uh, they initially had discussions for the application. And that's where it ended. There was never an application.
It looks like from my review, it just stopped right there.
Yeah, they, they never engaged, no app, so basically we did the allocation. But we were basically told, cause I inquired about it and they said, well, we would, they were basically, uh, I was told that O R M C had to engage a letter that they were not going to request the funds anymore. When I talked to Stacy, he said, the, the whole process just stopped and there was never a request. There was never an official request for R M C. So basically it just stayed in the allocation parts and that's where it was stuck. So it's just a matter now of us as the council to, you know, designate the reallocation.
The, and I, and I believe a lot of the, like, the city's pandemic response in city finance, that's actually broken up into various small project numbers that tie back to how we have to report that each quarter. So we have different, uh, accounts such as tests, other services, operating supply vaccinations that were tied back to when the pandemic was more in line with the, the pandemic actually occurring. And so in the balance up here, the amount to be reobligated under the city's pandemic response, the one point three million, what will need to happen is before we actually get ready to allocate these funds, those costs that are still in those individual accounts can be reallocated as well.
So we have, so basically on the test remain is one hundred and ninety-nine thousand. And then on the other services, two fifty?
It is, it's a hun- it's a hundred and ninety-nine thousand for tests, other services, two fifty. That never got spent at all. It was allocated but not spent. Operating supplies was seven hundred and forty-two thousand and vaccinations is a hundred and ninety-eight thousand.
So all this money is available too?
It is available to, that is what's left after has what been, not been spent. So those, those, those costs would still stay in those accounts. It was just, the remaining balances would be real.
So that's how you got to the one point three?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and there is one other concern under the payroll reimbursement costs. So, you know, here recently, council identified to allocate seven million for public save, the public safety pay increase. When that was done though, there was actually three point six already allocated for payroll reimbursement costs by prior councils.
Yeah.
Okay, so right now that line, as you can see, shows ten point six. So is, is that, does that three point six need to be reallocated? I wouldn't say touch the seven because that's already being in there, it's being spent. And as you can see, what's been allocated there, the one point three under the allocated column is what is already two quarters of that payroll reimbursement cost. That's what happened since the, the pay increases took place.
Right.
So was that original three point six payroll allocation? Do you know what that was for? Was that gonna be for?
I, I believe at the time it was because the rulings were still so new, it was what council approved in each of those different accounts. So payroll reimbursement cost is actually its own line item in city finance.
Okay.
And so at the time, it, it wasn't being spent for anything, so it's just been sitting there as obligated funds. But it can be re-obligated now.
Okay.
And leave the seven million there. Of course, one point three has already been spent from there. And the same thing with the lost revenue line item. That's just how, at the time when that first allocation was done, there, and there's a line item called lost revenue. That's for, to be used on government services. It was just another line item in the, the breakdown of everything to be spent that way. So it can be moved as well. That hasn't been touched yet either.
So the amount of eleven million, seven hundred and eighty-eight thousand doesn't take into consideration the three point six already being allocated?
It, it does take into consideration, the three point six, yes. And I would say that is a, is, is still an estimate. I would say just because it says eleven seven, you may just have eleven five. Depending on what's happened since the last work session when this was supposed to be brought, this hasn't been looked at again there. I doubt anything's been spent there, but these accounts hardly have any activity right now in them, other than the payroll reimbursement costs.
Are we under any kind of timeline as to when we have to spend all these?
Yes, we have to have everything obligated by December thirty-first of twenty twenty-four, which means it needs to be budgeted.
Yeah.
It needs to be spent by December thirty-first of twenty twenty-six. Now, with the three new line items that have happened with the twenty twenty-three interim final rule, or whatever they're gonna decide to start calling these things, though, they do have specific timings that are a little bit different. Those recipients must obligate funds used for surface transportation projects and Title I projects by December thirty-one, twenty twenty-four, and must expend the funds by September thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. So you have to actually have those funds for road projects or any type of Title I projects by September thirtieth instead of the December thirty-first timeframe. It's just another thing to look at as we're, as we're doing that to get those projects spent.
And, and, and that's what makes it a trick, yeah. Uh, I think that we as a council, one thing that we haven't done is, I think we need a work, not a work session, or a, a workshop where we can sit down, get a list, kinda like what we do when we do the allocations for, uh, hot funds, stuff like that, put what we have in road projects, look at things that are eligible within the city of where we want to be able to put these funds in. When we look at road projects, which we wind up doing, we keep this in mind when we look at that, that is not only the, uh, obligation, but it has to be completed. And if, and you know how road projects are, you know, we have to make sure that we're very diligent, that, you know, there's enough timeline to get completed because not, it's a violation and we're gonna have to pay those funds back. So this gets very, very tricky when it comes to road project, even though they're eligible.
And it looks like too, that those rules are constantly still changing, so that may be blown out of the water the next time we talk about this. So it's just, a- a- at the time that we're meeting, those are the rules in place right now.
At the ti- but the time when we do, right, right now, those are the rules. That's what we have to operate on. And I think, we know they're gonna change. But also that change, it could make it a lot more stricter. And hopefully, you know, I know there's legislation within, you know, Washington about allowing cities to spend however they wish, but that has not been a, that has not passed.
So, so you're saying that if we spend this on any kind of project, road, whatever it might be, you know, we s- we pay for that project, that project has to be completely completed?
There, there are some specific, there are specifics on, on certain, uh, uh, criterias of where we can obligate monies. Now, we have a criteria of when we obligate. That's the first one. But like, certain road projects, road projects, they do have a timeline. They have to be completed.
Everything has to be obligated budgeted by December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. So by next Christmas, everything's gotta be, and I, I think it probably needs to be done way before that.
Yeah.
Just so you're not rushing into the line with how council meetings fall and getting that approved, I think that, but that would probably be best to get it completely done as early as we can.
I would like to be able to put together, um, you know, what, with everybody's agreeable, uh, schedules. Uh, sooner the better, before we get into, uh, into the holidays. Let's get to, uh, get a workshop. Let's go item by item. Let's locate, because there's a lot of asks. We got things from, uh, parks, uh, the rattles, uh, we have issues at, at McKinney. We've got, uh, water issues, uh, we got road issue. Look at the smaller projects. We've got, uh, infrastructure issues. Let's go through all those, let's do a work session, let's start discussing in detail and go item by item and item. And then we go every council and, and bank issue. Just kinda like we do with the hot.
Yeah, it'd be nice to have like a spreadsheet where we can.
Yeah, see exactly what you want. And there, there, during the budget season, this, this past budget season, departments have brought those requests and I've identified for them, let's use, this could probably be used here, but we do need to want, wanna have council, you know, looking at them, of course, and before we decide that. That way, that doesn't affect your department's budget dollars. So there, a lot of those talks have happened with departments throughout the season.
Do that be the best way to do it?
Yeah.
And then, and then if we need to, you know, whoever's putting up the, uh, the project name here and explaining, if we need a little more information, then just go without that. Put upon the city secretary to finagle everybody's schedules, like herding cats. What do you think about the, uh, counting, uh, input? You think that's a good idea?
Yes, I do.
Yeah. All right. Then we also, we can set goals for the twenty twenty-four. That way, you know, what, what we wanna see accomplished in the next, uh, fiscal year. Any other discussion?
Any questions for me?
Seth, I have just a question. It's just an odd ball, and of course. It's just an oddball, and of course, but I've experienced in banking, auditors walking in, and it's always, oh my gosh, and here it comes. In your position with the city, do we ever have any federal?
This is tested as part of the single audit requirement.
I mean, physical auditing, where they show up?
Yes, they, they do show up. Now, the, the interesting part about this, this grant, because this is just a normal, if you take away everything that makes up the purpose of this grant, it's still just a federal grant. Means it has requirements that have to be audited each year. Because of the dollar value, this is probably gonna be one that's looked at every year.
Yeah, I would think so.
And it wa, it's been looked at the past two years. I know we didn't spend a lot, but because that money was coming in and the accounting that takes place, making, you know, we got the money in, but we didn't spend it, so it became deferred revenue at the time, back and forth. They've got to test on that. It's an easy test, but now that the money's gonna be starting to be spent, there are different requirements. A lot of the, like, the sub-recipient allocations that we did, those are, those got tested during the twenty-two audit that's, that's going on right now. So there was new requirements that, at the time, they're writing these new rulings, well, the auditors, they also have a new ruling to follow on their end to test this stuff. So you have to kind of like, back and forth, like, okay, it's in this rule, and then we've had to come up with procedures just to identify that we're, at the time, we're in line. So when the audit's finally done, we might not be in line, but what did you do to address it at the time? So you have that, like, you've got your, I did this at this time, I did this at this time, and tie it out, and you just kind of move forward that way. But it's, it's a constant changing, you know, X marks the spot at the end.
Thank you.
It's a funny way to say it, but that's, that's, that's kind of the end result.
My goodness. All right. So we'll come up with a date and do the workshop, and then we'll try to see if we can get allocation and just move forward and put this money in play. Council, any other discussion? Any other questions for Seth? No more interrogation.
Thank you, Seth.
You're welcome.